We got this close enough. Everybody ready?
They gave me everything.
Everybody ready?
Oh, thanks.
Yep.
Anderson City Council for Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, 7:00 PM is now called to order. Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any agenda item that we have. Please limit to five minutes. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment? If not, we move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular force of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding the next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is any discussion? Do you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Presentation by Ken Tausma of Anderson-Tackman on the June 30, 2017 audit.
Please.
I'll take one.
Turn around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me here to present the 2017 audit results. This year was, I think, a pretty good year financially for the city. As always, with the financial audit, the most important thing is the opining on the accuracy of their financial statements. There's four types of opinions. Adverse being bad, disclaimer, which is also pretty bad, because there isn't information or evidence to support the financial statements, and there's unmodified and modified opinions. The modified is pretty much everything's okay, except for maybe some of the items aren't as good a shape or as reconciled as they ought to be, but overall, I think they're pretty good. And then the best opinion is the unmodified, which is what the city of Manistee got again this year, meaning everything is far as following the accounting principles and accuracy and being able to be supported by outside audit evidence. Everything came out fine. In example, some of the things we do is we send direct confirmations to all the banks that the city does a business with, and we confirm every bank account and every one that's held at each bank you do business with, so we know that that's directly accurate with them. And we do a lot of transaction testing and a lot of analytical relationship review and different confirmation with the state and also with your debt as well to make sure everything checks out. Next thing we'll get into is the graphical presentation. This shows the first one of the assets of the entire city. Like most cities, most of the assets are tied up in your capital assets, which is all the infrastructure and buildings and equipment and vehicles and such. Then we also have deferred out closure, which are basically kind of a deferred loss relating to the pension and the new recording requirements that relate to it. Then you have cash equivalents of about 1.9 million, investments of about 11.6, mostly which is comprised of the oil and gas fund, receivables due from governmental units for the different state and federal grants, internal loans and prepaid items for insurance and also inventories. So those are all the assets or things of the city. Next graph shows the liabilities or things owed of the city. Again, one of the biggest areas is the bonds payable. It's about 16.3 million for the different bonds out for the water and sewer system, as well as other debts for street projects and things like that. Then you also have notes payable for equipment, capital leases for equipment, OPEB liability for retiree healthcare, employee benefits that are vested of 305,000, which is the accumulated sick and vacation time that employees have earned that will be paid upon their leaving. Accounts payable due to the vendors, accrued liabilities, things like payroll, payroll taxes, accrued interest on debt, security deposits, unearned revenue. And lastly, the pension obligation, which is a new thing, we're about the third year in that we've required now to basically put on the financial statements, the portion of the pension that's unfunded. Now, we take a snapshot at your balance sheet date, seeing what the assets in the plan versus the obligations and where you're funded. And that liability is 3.9. Fortunately, because I think MERS is trying to true things up, you know, the different factors as far as rates of return, raised, anticipated raises, inflationary changes, they've kind of got a little bit more realistic, I think, which has helped. And also, the market did better last year. You kind of gained about 232,000 on the liability from last year, so that's, I think, a good thing as far as the pension obligation, a little bit better. And also with your bonds, I think you had about 1.8 million paid off in debt from last year, so your debt got paid on pretty significantly from last year.
The pension liability is as of 31 December 2016, and the rest of the audit is through the 30th of June. Is that correct?
Correct, because the actuarial on the plan is calendar year. That's right. So there's kind of a six-month lag. For entities that are calendar, it's right on, like the counties and things like that, but everybody else, there's can be a lag. The next graph is the equity of the city. So it's unrestricted. Restricted, mostly what's restricted for staying in the oil and gas fund. And the investment capital assets, which is the amount of your, all your capital assets free and clear of debt. It's all went out right. Excuse me. Next, we have the revenues of the entire government, showing what we collect in taxes. Your tax basis stayed pretty strong. Your tax revenues are up slightly. What you get for licenses and permits stayed pretty even. State sources was a little bit up. I think revenue sharing was 36,000, better than last year. And also, you had some different state grants that were new for 17. The local sources stayed even. The charge for services went down a little bit. Those are the fees charged to different departments of the city. Interest and rents did quite a bit better because of the gains and interest earnings for the oil and gas fund. Had a really good year, which accounts for most of that jump. And now the revenues stayed pretty even, about 266,000. The next graph shows the expenses of the government funds, so legislative, which is the council, general government, which includes things like treasurer, clerk, elections, building grounds, public safety, which is police and fire, public works, mostly with the street funds, NDBW, economic growth, went down this year. I think they also got folded into federal government this year. Other expenditures was up a little bit, 554,000, and capital outlay was at 42,000. And debt service stayed pretty even, up from 774,000 to 119,000, and that's to pay the principal interest on all the general bonds of the city. Next graph is on the water and sewer fund, showing its revenues over the last three years. Stayed pretty even compared to last year, about 3.7 million refunds and reimbursements. We didn't have anything this year compared to 30,000 last year. The interest and rents and other revenues are pretty even, and the state grants bumped up quite a bit from last year. We had the new SAW grant that was taken out for 17, which is a different software asset management system, and you'll see on the next graph, there's also a bump in consulting expenses that relates to that as well. So the next graph shows the expenses of the entire water and sewer system. Personnel services, which are different wages and salaries and related fringes, stayed pretty even. Contracted services jumped up because of that new grant, and the expenditure for that grant purpose. Insurance stayed pretty even, administration up slightly, equipment rental pretty even, and supplies pretty even for the expenses of the water sewer system. The next graph continues on the expenses of the water and sewer system, which was spent in utilities, repair maintenance. We had a bit of a decrease in repair maintenance from last year, I think from 362,000 to 194,000. So not quite as much money needed to keep the system upgraded. Depreciation went from about 1,082 to 1,042, which is the allocation of the depreciation expense over the lives of the assets. We have miscellaneous bond issuance costs, none this year. Again, last year, we didn't have any. The year before, we had some, but no new bonds issued this year. And interest expense landed about 302,000, up down about 30,000 from last year. And the last graph shows the general funds, fund balance over the last five years. Last year, we kind of dipped a little bit from about 1,051 to 927,000. This year, we recovered a bit, about 1,093, so you had a kind of resurgence in your fund balance. As a rule of thumb, the U.S. Finance Administration usually goes by the rule of you want to keep at least 10 to 15 percent of next year's budget expenditures and transfers out in your fund balance. You never want to go below that floor, so you guys are above that and in a good place as far as where you'd like to have your fund balance. As I said at the beginning, financially, things look pretty healthy for the city this year as far as building your fund balance a little bit. You know, you paid down your debts, about 1.8 million. The pension liability went down about 232,000. Revenue sharing was bumped up by 36,000, so a lot of good things in all those areas, which we like to see.
I have a question on cash equivalents unrestricted at 1.9 mil. Is that down from last year? I mean, I can pull up the previous year's budget up. I mean, we've got a higher cash. We've got, at the end of things, we've got a higher fund balance at the end, but I thought we were in excess of 2 million unrestricted last year. I mean, there's no comparison here between last year and this year. It's just kind of a snapshot of one-year picture here, so maybe you have to float back and forth between audits to see, you know, where you've gone up or down.
You start doing comparative of the assets would be helpful. I think it was around 2 million, the lowest 2 million.
I thought it was about 2.2 or 2.3 last year. I just thought I noticed a difference there on the retirement. I noticed they talk about discount rates, an 8 percent discount rate, and then they talk about projected returns on equities and fixed income and other categories. None of the estimated returns in the future are anywhere near an 8 percent or a 7 percent assumption. And there's a huge difference in projected retirement unfunded liability between the assumed value and dropping 1 percent or dropping 2 percent would be an even more remarkable change in that. Is there a reason why we're using assumptions that have not been attained recently or historically?
Well, I think historically, they probably have been that good. Probably in the late 90s, they were, but, you know, I think.
It's been a long time.
Yes, it's been a long time. But I think they use kind of like this long-term forecast, which I agree probably still isn't that realistic. You know, but these actuaries that do these things, they have all the different training and these things to, you know, compile these numbers, and in the end, it's kind of an estimate. And like I said, basically, over the periods of time they do, they believe they can get that over, whether it's 20 or 30 years, but, you know, I feel like, you know, it'd be better to kind of use something closer to what's real and what they're using, but I suppose that's something you need to work out with them when they... I think they usually come and talk to most governments at least once a year, don't they do a report? Somebody from MERS. Yeah.
You know, I'm just saying, you know, in the actual audit, when you're looking at it, you see the 3.959 unfunded liability, then you see the chart, and if we missed that by 1 percent, if it's 7 percent to 8 percent, it'd be $5.9 million. And that's a $2 million shift right there. If it's less than 7 percent, it's even more severe. So it seems like we're taking a really optimistic view of the retirement liability going forward. And yes, I can appreciate back in the 90s, the market was doing great, but everything we've seen since 2008 keeps speaking to the 2008 turmoil and a recovery, and I just wonder if those are realistic projections or, I mean...
Yeah, I don't think so. I think most people, most people probably don't think so, say, but we, you know, as I said, those guys are kind of a specialist in that area, and they kind of defer to their knowledge and what their history and these types of things are, and I guess we'll have to see, but I... The market's been a little bit better since 16, you know, but it's like, whether that remains, hard to say. I think it'd be nice to have them come and maybe explain some of these things to you guys and different rates.
I have a question. It's on page 32 of the, or I'm sorry, on page 31 of the audit.
Okay.
Report. We talk about custodial deposit credit risk.
Right.
Is that something we need to correct, or is that something that's recommended that we correct?
This is, this is a required disclosure. There is no law or accounting standard requiring you to be so much covered as far as FDIC insurance. And you kind of balance between the practicality of being able to manage all your bank accounts and like if you're in a, you know, more remote area, you may not have as many banks to diversify with and all these things, but most governments don't find themselves being 100 percent covered or even that high, but they kind of look at it and realistically figure, you know, how covered do we want to be compared to the work it will take to do that and different banks you have to do business with and now manage all these bank accounts at different institutions, so... You know, back, back before the market got bad in 2008, I'd say I wasn't really too worried about it at that point. I think we all were, but, you know, but I think as an organization, you kind of weigh those things and consider where you want it to be. I said there's no law, there's no accounting requirement to be at any percentage.
Okay.
If I might elaborate on that a little bit, too, it's, if you wanted to be 100 percent FDIC insured, you would have an unworkable system because there aren't enough banks in Northwest Michigan to be able to do that. Our primary deposit area is Huntington. They're very strong financially. I monitor that on a quarterly basis. There's zero risk of them defaulting. The feds wouldn't let them default, even if they were going to have some problems, and there's no indication of that whatsoever. So even though there's a lot of money that's not protected by FDIC insurance, the risk I, in my estimation, is very, very low.
Okay. Just wanted to hear that, the explanation, so thank you.
I think Ed made a good point with that. That's something that a lot of municipalities do to make sure that they are kind of addressing that risk and making sure that they're dealing with people that they feel are solid, so their money will be safe.
Thanks, Ed.
Public safety. It would appear that public safety is up about $200,000 over last year. Our transport charges from public safety, where are those, are those credited against the expenses?
No, they're not credited against the expenses, because then you wouldn't have a true picture of what the expenses were. They're shown as revenue. They're not broken out in that level of detail on the audit report, though.
Would that balance the apparent increase?
Our revenues from transport did not increase by the amount that the expenses went up, no. I mean, they have been going up somewhat year over year because the Medicare reimbursement levels go up and we're doing, you know, more runs and that sort of thing, but it doesn't increase at that rate.
Okay. We had some additional capital things purchased, didn't we?
I'd have to look back.
I think there was some purchases, too, this year, probably attributed to some of that increase.
Any other questions?
I have a question, but it's, I don't know whether it's appropriate to ask at this time, but I will. We're looking at the increasing our debt, or we're looking at taking on more bonds to cover sewer upgrades.
Right.
Is there any way to give us an opinion on how much of that we can comfortably take on?
Well, the state kind of goes by a rule of, I think it's like 10 percent of your taxable value, they don't want you to go over that. I think you guys aren't anywhere close to the limit.
The difference is, I think that's for the general obligation bonds, and we're not anywhere near that. The revenue bonds for the water and sewer are fully self-supporting, and we just, in the process of issuing this last bonds, we got our credit, investment-grade credit rating was reaffirmed. It's an A, you know, A rating. Actually, it might be a little higher than that. I can't remember what it was off the top of my head, but it's investment grade. And the thing to keep in mind is, we are taking on a lot more debt, but we have existing debt that's going to be paid off in a couple of years. And so as that debt falls off, this new debt takes that place. So overall, the debt load is going to be increasing, but we have more than enough headroom to support that additional debt service. And that's a basis of the timing of when they first started doing the sewer separation projects, which was 20 years ago, some of those bonds are being paid off now. And so then we've got room to, you know, do this last phase of that. So we talked to S&amp;P about all of that, you know, we told them that we had plans to issue additional debt, and they were comfortable with the rating. So I think, I think we're in a strong financial position for that.
Okay, good.
I'd like to go back just to the MERS while Mr. Bradford's up here. How do we deal, it looks like we're continually slipping backwards here. We're continually...
Well, I think...
How do we deal with that in the future?
I think this probably warrants a work session discussion. I mean, we had MERS here a short while ago to talk about ways of, you know, reducing that unfunded liability. But I do want to point out a couple of things. MERS is pretty aggressive about updating their experience studies, so every five years they take a look at what all of the pension plans in their system, and they manage pension plans for hundreds of municipalities. Are their assumptions meeting what's in reality? And in this last go-around, they did a number of things. One is they lowered the rate of return from 8 percent to 7.75 percent, which doesn't sound like a lot, but in the actuarial calculations, it's a big deal. And it actually, it actually increases the amount that the city has to pay in contributions pretty significantly. And they did that based on their forward-looking estimates of what they can earn and also based on, you know, where they think the markets are going to be. So they did that. They also increased the rate at which they amortize the unfunded liabilities pretty significantly. And then they also tweaked the mortality tables a little bit because people were living longer. So all three of those adjustments that they made caused municipalities to have to pay more, which will pay down that unfunded liability faster. And because a lot of communities, unlike us, can't afford to do that at the rate that MERS was doing it, they gave them the option of phasing in those new rates over a five-year period, so phasing in the impacts of basically the faster amortization. The city chose not to do that. We absorbed that all in year one, and the reason we did that is because it'll help us to pay down those liabilities faster. We've also reduced benefits for new hires in several of the divisions and are looking at doing the same in the remaining two. So we've done a lot of things proactively to try to control that unfunded liability. The other thing to keep in mind is, the numbers that are in the audit are based on a GASBY accounting standard, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It doesn't impact what we have to pay on an ongoing annual basis in terms of how it impacts our budget, because that's done via an actuarial calculation. So there is a little bit of a disconnect between those two, and some people would argue maybe a 7 or 8 percent rate of return isn't reasonable moving forward, but MERS has a pretty good track record, and if the markets stay even where they're at today, they'll far exceed that for this calendar year. So you'll see some of those costs starting to trend down, I think, in the future as they average those in. But the other thing is, some people would look at these GASBY standards and say, some of that's not very realistic either. So it's kind of this balancing act. And those numbers, the single biggest driver of that actuarially accrued liability is the rate of return. So you can have people living longer, you can have maybe lower wage increases or higher wage increases than what they figure in their actuarial model, but the rate of return drives everything. To get a couple of good years, it can really drive that liability down. But I just want to point out that the numbers that are reflected in here are based on the accounting convention that the GASBY forces us to do, and those have been in effect now for two or three years.
Third year.
Whereas the actual formula that drives what the city has to pay and what we have to fund is based on the MERS actuarial valuation. And so there is a difference there, and I think that's important to point out. The other thing to keep in mind is, almost every person who's an expert in pensions looks at 80 percent funding as being a comfortable level. You know, that's where you want to be, 80 or above, and we've been there. Ours have gone down, but it's been primarily because of the rate of returns and because of the new assumptions that MERS has had. So last year, when we had that big drop, 4 percent of that drop, four percentage points, was entirely due to the change in the MERS assumptions. I mean, they changed the assumptions and our percentage dropped 4 percent. So I think it's something we're keeping an eye on. I think it's something we're monitoring. I think we're being proactive moving forward. Council would like to have representative from MERS come up at some time. We can certainly do that, but I just wanted to point out some of that.
I personally look forward to a work session with MERS and help understand.
I think when we started with MERS way back, about 10 years ago, we were looking at, you know, $30,000, $40,000 cost and actually commending ourselves for making such a prudent move at the time and reducing our liability. Just last year, we're over $330,000. The audit says because of actuarial changes, we can expect a surge in cost for this next year. I mean, the state 15 years ago got off of defined benefit and went to defined contribution, and that's been kind of the trend in industry, is that conversation we need to have, that we need to start thinking.
Well, I think we have had that conversation to some degree. I think you have to be cautious when you're looking at that, because you can significantly drive up your costs in the short term potentially by doing that. We got our actuarial valuation back for the next budget year, and our increase is going to be fairly modest, primarily because we're doing the full effect of the phase and we're not stretching that out over five years. Plus, there was a decent market return. So, I mean, that's certainly a policy... So, I mean, that's certainly a policy decision that council can have. It requires, you know, obviously requires a dialogue with all of the bargaining units. And there's a lot of people that would argue that that's not a prudent thing to do if you're funding the plan appropriately and making all your required contributions and have reasonable benefits. So I think it really, you know, it could merit more discussion for sure. I think it's something that, you know, we monitor closely and try to keep tabs on that, but it certainly can have more discussion.
Well, you know, when I read what's in the audit and look at other budget projections that we have and going two years out before we get to this year budget, that's an area that stands out as it's the fastest growing expense that we've had in the budget in the last ten years, so.
It has risen, it has risen. It would be, we'd be in a lot worse position if we had stayed where we're at though, rather than moving to MERS in terms of how much money we're paying out. Another thing that you should be aware of is the state is, they had a task force on post-retirement benefits. And the biggest, you know, there's outstanding pension benefits across the state at the local, but those are far outweighed by retiree healthcare liabilities. And the city has a very, very, very small OPEB liability for retiree healthcare. So there's some, there's many communities that have a pension plan and pretty significant retiree healthcare. We don't have that, so that saves the city quite a bit of money. But that has to be taken into the context too of what's the total package that you're offering to employees. There's likely to be legislation coming out after Thanksgiving that's going to address some of those OPEB liabilities. I don't know what form it's going to take, it may not make it through, but there's rumblings that that's going to happen. So keep posted on that and we'll let you know as information comes out too.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments concerning the audit? Well, thank you very much, appreciate your presentation.
And I'd like to thank Ed and Michelle and all the staff for helping gather all the information and things we needed for the audit and pull all the documentation. Everybody's very thorough and fast and helpful in getting us what we need and our questions answered. So we appreciate that and appreciate working with you guys again. The one new thing I was going to mention, we had to do an audit of the Act Fifty-One monies this year, which we won't have to do after this year anymore. MDOT has changed their position, they aren't going to require it anymore, but that was an additional thing we had to do. Kind of take a fine-tooth comb and go through all the expenditures that go into the street funds and make sure that they're all being posted accurately and recorded and everything's allocated in the right buckets. And everything came out fine with that audit as well, no issues, so good audit with the Act Fifty-One monies. I think that's pretty much all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and I usually say if there's any questions to come up later or anything further, don't hesitate to contact me, email, call, whatever, so.
Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. City clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Park Commission and Tree Commission. Mayorial appointments require a motion, second, and a council vote support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all the nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives a majority vote. The following applications have been received. Board of Review, two vacancies, one regular member and one alternate member, terms expiring twelve thirty-one twenty. Applicants must be city tax-paying registered voters, this is a council appointment. Julianne Sibley, two-one-four Hughes Street, is the incumbent and an applicant for the position.
I'd like to nominate Judy Ann Sibley, two-forty-one Hughes Street, to fill the position of regular member, expiring twelve thirty-one twenty.
Second.
No second required.
No second required, okay.
Please take role.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grubowski?
Vote for the individual.
Sibley, you're right. That's why I said, well, then you...
Yes.
Sibley, you got to say Sibley.
Sibley.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zelinski?
Sibley.
Councilmember Beaton?
Sibley.
Councilmember Paniac?
Sibley.
And Mayor Smith?
Sibley. Thank you.
Park Commission, four vacancies, two terms ending six-thirty-eighteen, one term ending six-thirty-nineteen, and one term ending six-thirty-twenty. Three appointments may be non-residents but must own real estate or a business profession, having a licensed business location in the city or have a child attending school within the city, this is a mayorial appointment. I would appoint Tom Swedenberg, five-sixty-two First Street, to the term ending six-thirty-twenty.
I support the mayor's nomination.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zelinski and a second by Councilmember Beaton. Is there any discussion?
Please take role.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Grubowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would nominate Frank Cardelia to the term ending five-eighty Broad Avenue to the term ending six-thirty-nineteen.
I'll support.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zelinski and a second by Councilmember Beaton, any discussion?
Please take role.
Councilmember Grubowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
And approved.
Thank you.
Tree Commission, one vacancy, term ending twelve thirty-twenty, mayorial appointment, Patricia Williams, one-oh-five Lighthouse Way.
I'll make that motion to appoint Patricia Williams, one-oh-five Lighthouse Way.
One second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton and a second by Councilmember Goodspeed, is there any discussion?
Please take role.
Mayor Protem Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grubowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Appointment approved.
No, thank you.
Concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment? If not, we will move on to officials, staff, city manager.
Just a reminder that city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday in observance of Thanksgiving.
City attorney. City clerk.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Works Director.
Just a reminder, Your Honor, we're in the, the Public Works is in the process of picking up our leaves all through Manistee. Still getting a lot of phone calls to the office, wondering when we're doing it. Our goal is to make a complete circuit down every street each week during the month of November and the first week of December. If we finish early, we go on to other things. And if we can't get through the entire city in that week, then we start on Monday where we left off. But we'll keep going until all the leaves are up and out of the streets, so we don't blow them back in the yards when we're snowplowing. So just a reminder. Thank you.
Chief Financial Officer. I thank you for clarifying some of the points during the audit. City Engineer. Public Safety.
Public, Your Honor.
Was anyone injured in the automobile accident today?
If they were, it was relatively minor, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Council Members.
Yeah, I'd just like to wish everybody in this room a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
I'm thinking about the work session for next Tuesday. Is it, I would like to have some time to discuss my appointment and my responsibilities on the AES Board, if I may, during the work session.
Think it would be appropriate to just add it to the agenda at the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, because the agenda's already out there.
Okay.
There's some issues that have come up with that that we would need to discuss on council.
Thank you.
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, be traveling, drive safely. Same, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Be safe.
Thank you, me, you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I have to add to that, everybody have a very happy Thanksgiving, safe, pleasurable, look forward to seeing y'all's work session if you don't see you earlier.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second.